All right, let's get started. We used to choose. Governing the way that Alcorn County and citizens need and. Moving to seconded to improvements in last meeting. Any further discussion? None. I was opposed. Or here. Let us begin with public comment limited to three minutes. Please state your name and your township.
Stevens and Alcorn County. Government of grounds.
Oh, boy.
Hi. Basically, I am just presenting something, as you know, moving forward with our project about the growth, we're trying to get some numbers and. Prices of cost. So we have scheduled for next week on the thirteenth. For the contractors to meet here at ten AM, and we're going to do a walk around of the building to get rough idea. We've got a basic bid of around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's just a ballpark to take about measurements. This is to get a more further idea of what it might be and actually have to bid on the project. And we are bidding this out to be done next summer, but we need to get some ideas to right now at this point in time of what we're going to do to the roads and so. So we'll be meeting next week on the thirteenth. All bids have to be in by the twenty eighth, and then we'll have to go through them and open them up and see exactly where we're falling on our numbers. Because we need actual hard numbers if we're going to be using some of the other money to do this. We just. I think we need to finalize a little more than just a random number. We earn anywhere from ninety to one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, depending on who's looking at the project. And that basically is because to meet the new standards for Duralast to get their twenty five year on the warranty and meet out new energy codes. The existing roof, which has been out of warranty for ten years now, needs to be stripped all the way down to the sub roof. Two new layers of insulation put on the roof, and then the actual roofing material put on top of it. And so that's where the cost increases is if we actually go through that to get a twenty five year warranty. That's when the cost increases. The twenty, October twenty. I don't know. That is one of those things that we will have to get together with the commissioners and figure out, because it has to be opened up in a public session like that. So we're going to have to sit down and do that. I did drop the ad off down at Alcorn County Review. It's had run for three weeks. Just to let people know that we will be doing the public meetings, open up the bids and stuff like that. So that's one of the things you want to finalize with commissioners. And the building and grounds committee is wanting to want to open up the business. So we're trying to get a lot of this done this fall while we can still get up on the roof and walk around and so. So we have a better idea kind of order. So is anybody working with the captain? It's just a notice in there. Okay, I didn't know if there's needed or for a pool for that. So let's let you guys go under new business if you guys want to discuss that at all.
We can add, yeah, sure.
Do you need me here to answer any questions? No, I wish I had a better offer.
I just turned it over here today. And I I suggested Dave that I'll be here too.
Yeah, man, I'll be here.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else from our public comment? Gary.
Yes. You know, before Gary Mitchell Township. You know, before everybody started getting involved in what's going on in this country and started getting into. Into running for office and politics, there was a group of those that got involved. Because they know they needed to do things in the civic level to keep the counties running. And Adam, I know you were one of those people. And I just wanted to express my gratitude for you doing the things and and those that were are like you that actually did things, you know. Before all this stuff started. And I just think you need to be commended for having that ability to take care of, you know, civic responsibilities. Even your townships. And, you know, our comments go on. So I, you know, sometimes we lose sight of that. That fact. Yeah, I think you guys need to be. You know, graduated and shown some appreciation.
Thanks, Gary. Anybody else spoke counter? Anybody online public counter? Okay, moving on. Troy Summers, utilization director, portion report for village like.
I'm assuming you guys all got a copy of that?
Yep.
Kind of self explanatory, but I go present it every year to you. So. And shows you what the village. The dollar amount. Is going to be. A resolution. That's all.
What's the bottom line? Higher or lower than before?
Well, it was a little lower, lower this year. Now, I can't predict it as market. It's booming right now. Not next year, twenty twenty three, because our sell period follows the market. So we're a year behind. So remember that. So next year is still probably going to hold. The following year.
Yeah, because a lot of stuff probably got uncapped.
Well, yeah, but that's not going to happen until twenty twenty three.
Yeah, right.
Because our sell period is March thirty first, is when it ends.
Right.
So anything after March won't be used till twenty.
Yeah, yeah.
So you won't see much. For twenty two.
Right. Looks like a little bit.
A little, that problem in twenty two.
Twenty two.
Probably go up a little bit. Last year. For for this portion or here, you'll see that some of them have a rollback. But I don't predict a rollback. I don't. I don't think the. I think everybody might move back just about. Yeah, definitely go back.
All right.
So if you have any questions, I'll be more invited to answer, but it's kind of. Villages are.
No.
And I showed you the dollar amount. It's like the whole thing for the schools and so forth. Sometimes it might be a little bit earlier. I get to use it. It all depends what time or when I get the forty twenty nines, which I have the knowledge of sometimes. So. But if there are no other questions, good to go.
All right, thank you. I'd like to make motions to approve the report.
I would move to approve the resolution of the twenty twenty one portion of the report. And to offer us the chair to sign.
By Caroline's support of a bill. A good discussion. They draw call this, you think?
Brady.
Yes.
Freeman. Yes, got there.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes. Motion carries. Ever date night, no.
It's the same goal call. They say, no, they.
Yeah. It was real power in that way. Next up, presentation is Gary Van Hook.
Excellent. Want to apologize for not coming to a lot of these meetings. This year's kind of been tough on us. You know, I have parents to deal with. My dad finally died in June and. His sister died in July and things have been just going on because it only bothers me. To come before a board without, you know, participating in it. Well, I'm been the same way with the township as this year. I haven't missed the township. Because I think people need to be involved in their own. In their government, you know, it's it's something just to show up out of the blue and complain about things and that. Kind of irritates me. So I just wanted to start this over there. I presented a resolution to you. We hold these. Truths to be self evident that all men are created equal and that they are endowed by their creator with certain inalienable rights. That among these life would be in pursuit of happiness and to seek pure those rights governments are instituted among them. Deriving their just powers from the consent of the government. So. The purpose of government is to protect our lives. It's not to keep us safe. It's not to. To make sure we're doing all the right things and taking care of us from cradle to grave. Governments are instituted so that we properly treat one another by respecting property rights. And, you know, the legal rights of not walking into your neighbor's buildings and taking his stuff and vice versa. That's why governments are instituted. So when you get to a resolution, you will find the first three that have, whereas. Are your oath, the amendment, the first amendment clause. And the one of the intention of the first clause, which talks about. Free exercise of religion. And then in the fourth, whereas is a forensic analysis of the correspondence of the statements made during the constitutional convention. The next five wherestes. Are adding substance to the fact that the free exercise clause in the constitution is not about worship. Or what religious denomination of practice you want to participate in. It was your rights of conscience, your strongly held convictions. That you believe are between you and the creator. The remedy, I'd just like to. Quote Jefferson, we have said in one of those quotes I have there. The error seems not sufficient. We are advocating that the operation of the mind as well as the acts of the body. Are subject to the coercion of the laws. Our rulers have the authority over such natural rights only as we have submitted them. Rights of conscience we never submitted. We could not submit. We are answerable to them from. To our God, the legitimate powers of government extended such acts only as injurious to others. But it does me no injury for my neighbor to say there are twenty gods or no gods. Neither picks my pocket nor breaks my leg. Note these rights of conscience I included. The first Supreme Court justice wrote the first one. The author of the Declaration of Independence and third president wrote the second, whereas. Father of the Constitution, the milk taker, was James Madison. He was the fourth president, plus two others that show this was. The thought before the constitution had even brought up. So that was about our rights of conscience. Now to the intention of this document. Oh, I'm sorry. Next thing I want to talk about was the four wherestes to define free speech. The reason for this, there was a previous meeting, I had a discussion of the flag and what the flag had on it. And really, if that's, you want to consider that free speech or not, I think you need to look at what the intent. The framers had intended to do about free speech in the first place. And free speech was really supposed to be an exchange of ideas, not just saying anything that comes to that. As a matter of fact, I was teaching the constitution class. And I never wanted to hear the words that we have the right to free expression. Free expression was never our guaranteed right of speech. Now to the intention of the document. Basically that we, the Alcorn Board of Commissioners, will highly encourage our sheriff, prosecutors and justice. Not to enforce a prosecutor of knowledge, any law or mandate. State or federal that violates First Amendment rights for all citizens within the county. These rights are guaranteed to the citizens of the county by the U.S. Constitution. We hereby stand with our citizens, judges and law enforcement. In supporting collective advocacy for constitutional principles and rights. And we, that statement was very quick. The second one, that we, the next one that I want to touch on is that we, the Alcorn. County Board of Commissioners encourage all Michigan counties to support this affirmation for constituents by also standing with us and doing the same. Then I think that one stands on its own. The one that I want to address is the one that's of the view. Alcorn County Board of Commissioners stand opposed to any violation of our citizens' liberty and constitutional rights being infringed concerning the following. Rights of conscience, i.e. vaccine passports, religious stances on same sex marriage, abortion, to worship God, discipline our children. As needed law, controlling the course and direction of their education. Free speech. Again, mentioning Jesus Christ in public. Use of scriptures in public discourse, statements against vaccine mandates. Opinions against popular thought from the established media. Pro-life stances and apoidal opinion of establishment narratives regarding notions. Such as same sex marriage and illegal immigration, i.e. The question election results. That should also. Be permitted as free speech. Right to the people to peacefully assemble. Where it's okay to go to protest for Black Lives Matters or rioters in Oregon, Washington and Wisconsin. But to protest unconstitutional mandates in Lansing or to attend church services or others than evidence are deemed as super spreader events. Actives do not vaccinate for religious reasons and people just object to having form material put in their body. Again, this is a. Point of conscience that they have between themselves and their creator. Religious stances on same sex marriage. We go over the cases of the baker, the florist, photographer in Michigan, the orchard owners in Lansing. I don't see any need to go there. I think these are self explanatory too. To worship God. This state almost went down this path. Until the Speaker of the House brought to the governor's attention, the First Amendment doesn't allow or demand anything. Look at what happened in California and New York. If we need to discuss this, we can, but the results that are coming from California right now is I think they've been fined eight hundred thousand dollars. You know, I think John Carson's church. Was the church that was involved in that lawsuit. To disappoint our children is needed while also controlling the course and direction of their education. I have to say that this administration, the gift that keeps on giving, because right now, if you watch the news yesterday. You'll find out that the attorney general is going to be investigating all these parents that are complaining about critical race theory being taught in schools. People have been referred to as white supremacists. Which I'm having a hard time with for some of these people that have been protesting it have also been black. You know, there are those of us that have investigated history. You know, this country. Has, um. You know, have has some problems with what we do with race relationships. However, it wasn't the whole country. We talked about the ugly things that happened. We haven't talked about the good things, how, you know, black people were involved in our government, black people. Had authority over white people as pastors and that. When you take a look at Indiana, you know, the Hoosier State. Nobody knows about Harry Hoosier, the evangelist, which I believe that was what they took, you know, the. Town model on for, you know, we also have. Problems going on in schools now with, you know, trying to teach our kids they don't know what gender they are. And we really don't want you to have to do that, you know. Or or the things that they teach in sex education. I don't know if this book is in. In our county. As far as the school goes, but there's a book called Perfectly Normal, which to me is nothing more than pornography. The subject matter is is pretty. Rude. And I have copied this whole book and as far as I'm concerned, and it's geared for ten year old kids. So. You know, as far as free free speech goes. If you take a look. Now at colleges, my wife and I first experienced this. When we were in Tennessee, we went to the Smoky Mountains. There was this woman in this little yellow rectangle, which is called the free speech zone. And my wife was kind of giddy about it because the woman is a Christian woman and she was casting down religious inferiority. But it seems that those yellow boxes are only for for conservatives because. If you want to talk about the constitution, if you want to talk about pro-life things, about all that. And colleges are now doing this too. That's why there's a group called Fired that's fighting and stuff. That's the only place you're allowed to have a conversation. But if you want to teach weird and unusual things, because they were going from Sex Week at Harvard. In twenty seventeen. You know, and they're talking about. You know. Deviant sex, I'll put it that way to save everybody. I have the articles in the Daily Mail and the Huffington Post. But these people are all sitting around in a room showing, you know, presenting a slide show. You can't do that from the yellow box. I mean, there seems to be some hypocrisy on free speech. So, um. You know. Basically, to wrap this whole thing up. I am looking at somebody would stand up. For our. For our First Amendment rights. You know. I remember a few, quite a few years ago, there was a sign that disturbed somebody in that team. And the advertisement was get it and forget it. Had to do with birth control. The sign was thought to be inappropriate. Took a letter to the editor. And I know the commissioner that was sitting on district health at the time and brought it up. And those signs came down. I I think we're at a point in our history where we need to stand up and take a stance. And as far as people bringing up these. You know, vaccine mandates and saying, you know, those of us with COVID should stand at the back of the line. I've been down that path this year. I. Down. My wife checking into the hospital, went to the emergency room first. But I think they wanted to give me a steroid or something and sent me home. Which I went into further decline. I just thanked the man that that picked me up because he happened to be at the glanny station at the time. Took me down there. I was checked in the hospital for five days, which really amazed them because the first two days I don't even remember. I started coming out on Wednesday. Um. I I believe it was a total act of God because there's no way. I mean, I couldn't. It didn't hit me in my lungs. It hit me in my brain. I had encephalopathy. And. I couldn't stand two words together to make sense. My wife paid for the health insurance. And and also works for that hospital. And they have people making comments that those of us that get this, they need to go to the back of the line. You know, we have every right to everything to kind of disturb. Disturbed me the way we were kind of treated there because they were asking if we were vaccinated, if we intended on taking the vaccine. And. I know stats are the only thing, a few crams out of the box. To get the point across, they have to admit it. But, um. You know. It it just, you know, hearing stuff like that, you know, doesn't sound very compassion. Um. There's been no guarantee. I mean, people right now have been fully vaccinated. And getting this stuff and some of them have even been dying. So there's no guarantee. Um. Well, I I know my wife also. I really want to bring her up to this. Because when all this stuff started, my wife noticed the nursing staff being highly attached down there. And she was going in, you know, dressed up in a gear to feed COVID patients. The boss was so impressed, she got a three month award from the hospital. You know, the White House, they're going above and beyond. Because a lot of people were afraid to touch these people. Well, that's what we believe. We we give help to people that are in need. But anyways, I'm going to ask you to consider what I have given you for a resolution. And. You know, I don't think there's anything in there that doesn't say anything more than. We're going to support those individuals that want to support the First Amendment. And that's why I really kind of wish we were elected. Sometimes we have to stand as a town. Both of you stand as a county. As an example to the other towns that you need to step up and say something about this because it bothers me. When our commander in chief can say, you know, we've been patient about this thing, but our patience is wear thin. I mean, I'm sorry, to me, that's going to be the point of where you start to get down to the patient as we have the only answer. There's a statement called. Hearing the clap with only one hand, there isn't a count. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Um. So I would like to. Add to business after. Before the. Even stuff. Here's.
If we could. This is. To reflect the, you know, the question. The updated. With AC SOA and the last six quarters.
You just got.
AC SOA. You're asking us to sign a contract that needs provide. They provided the old contract, but not the new contract. And in it, it indicates that they are responsible for sending us a quarterly. And if they have had any unusual expenditures. And I would ask that, I think they have had unusual revenues expenditure recently. And I would ask that you would be supplied with that information. I would rephrase that. I would like to pass that board request.
Okay, let's move on to claims. Ready? Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve pre-authorized claims. You know, we plan to present a payment between September first, twenty twenty one. And September fourteenth, twenty twenty one for check numbers one, four, five, four, six, two, two, one, four, five, six. Four, nine, and each check number one, six, seven, four, two, one, six, eight, nine, for grand total of six hundred and seventy five thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars.
Motion by. Who the seconded? Motion by Dan, seconded by Gary.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
From it, yes, Thompson. I'm sorry, small.
Yes.
Call it there.
Yeah.
I want you to say it twice.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is a waiver of conflict intent representation regarding their local agreement. This is in regards to the process of us. Our deal, what's the property analogy for our deal? Lack of facility only. Not house prisoners. Those are motel basically, um. Yeah, actually, Scott, would you?
Yeah.
Speaking on this?
Yeah. We're talking about the letter from the.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom didn't seem to think there was a problem with it. They they represent us on a couple of things, they, I asked quite a few things. Um, it's just a disclaimer, just a disclaimer that they represent both sides in case you don't want them representing us on this.
Yeah.
I think I think it's more of a reality than anything else.
They're required to.
Yeah.
I need to approve an authorized chair design.
I'll support. What's my careless quarter by Dan? Any further discussion? Are you done? All of the paper?
All right.
All opposed? Okay. Okay.
I have a question for Scott, since it's in that truth.
Explain so everybody knows what our jail, when you say lockdown jail, what does that mean?
Uh, lock off.
So it's not.
Um, yeah, what what it means is that we can bring people in, house in there, but they have to have direct supervision. And the only time we have direct supervision for them, staff is during the daytime. One day from Friday, so if I if I lock somebody up in one of the in the cell, which would probably just be a hole in itself. I would have to bring it down to get off the roof and watch them, so. I i in staffing, the road patrol, it becomes a little bit confusing on how to how to handle that because either I have to call somebody in to do a transport. Or I have to call somebody in to watch the inmate in the cell, so.
And I would assume this would be a very short time limit there.
Yeah, the the state gives us up to seventy-two hours, but but for staffing purposes, I don't I don't have that, so. Uh, we would hold them there for a couple of reasons other than staffing. Um, like, or the DUI enforcement, sometimes we have to get served for it for their blood. And that will take a little bit of time, so instead of having them wait in the backseat of a police car, we put them in a little bit of itself. Some other investigations take a little bit of time, uh, where they're actually in custody and we're interrogating and things like that. And one might also use a hole in self or something like that, which typically very short, very short time, yeah.
When someone hasn't been booked in.
Right. Prior booking. We're still using it for booking on Fridays, we involve our arrangements for people to get appearance tickets. And and this appearance ticket law is really why we're where we're at, uh, with no inmates is, uh, people are presumed. Uh, to get free bond until they go to court. Um, so we have to give appearance tickets instead of arresting, when we used to arrest people for driving suspended and other things of that nature. So they all are going to come in here on Friday, get booked, fingerprinted, come over to the court. And get their bonds and leave here, so we're still going to use it for that function too, that's awesome.
So they are going to have staff there.
Yes, well, one day. I have one one deputy who can work in the jail because we we've moved him from the jail out there and work in there as a backup. So we have a little bit of contingency if if the the main guy is out or sick or on vacation or whatever.
Thanks.
Did you want to discuss the the contract that I asked you right now, or do you want to do that later? I mean, we haven't even had a chance to look at it yet.
I'm comfortable doing that.
Yeah, all right, yeah.
So the gist of it is um to reserve ten beds for us for the year, one hundred and thirty-five thousand. With the. Expansion of. Thirty dollars per day above that ten.
If you were above the ten.
If we run above the ten, it goes per day, per per day, for um, anything above the ten.
And I asked, well, currently jails, the only one we're going to use, not going to use.
Right, this, we're going to be exclusive with them. There there could be situations where we have multiple defendants on the same case, we're at the housing different jails and that comes up. Uh, rarely, in their effect, the last time we had to do it seriously was when the Chilwell, like, grocery got robbed and. The Terry and I were working, and we had multiple suspects in that in multiple jails, um, it's pretty rare. Um, but my my goal as a primary was to sue that.
Contract that you support it.
Four years, yeah.
Too long or? Is that is that the length that you want it?
Yeah, the the one, one I saw between Alpena and Mount Wrensy was a tenure. Uh, with the clause again of four years to raise, similar to this one, with the consumer price index for rates, um. Consumer pricing rates are a little on my head, but um. I guess I could block or balance. They left it in there, we left this as a as a four year. I don't know why they want a ten year up there, no idea, it's a really long time. When it was going to be here or there in ten years.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry, well, did there each other's contract?
Four years.
What are the terms on that? This first thing. Then.
Quarter, eight, four, yes, really.
Can I get a copy of that contract, Scott?
Sure, do you want it now or you want it to sign or?
When it's signed, okay, great, yeah.
Yeah, the court, Cheryl, you laid out this contract.
Yeah. And I guess this last question, Scott, do you have it set up in the state too, or something happened three years from now, we had to open this back up?
Yeah, we can't. Oh, yeah, yeah, we, it's not anything I can set up with the state, but I'll have to jump into some groups to do that, just like I had to jump through groups to balanceize. To get back in, um, we're going to keep the front cells, the what what I consider the old part of the jail. Um, open it up available, so if some emergency came down. Civil, this will be doing some riots or something like that, we have the space to lock them up. What what I really have to do is suddenly get the staff and watch them, but the space, the space will be there.
So it's still.
Yeah, still functional, still.
The corner, worse than the chair, more.
And.
Really, we're in that, pretty, never made to the.
Okay, I just emailed it out. Yesterday.
We have people laid out, right?
We do, yeah.
So what's kind of important, that we did this?
Well, it it is, they're going to start this for DM for now until there's a contract signed, so.
Is the rate they're charging right now higher than what? Say, say.
Yeah. Yeah, and what and what this hundred thirty-five thousand is not, it's not bodies, it's beds, so they they've got those beds are always going to be over there.
So then there will be somebody coming out of this twenty-one, like.
I'm. I'm there, I'm there. Chair to approve and authorize the chair design.
I'll submit. Motion by Carolyn, second by Dan. Chair to sign contract for the Osmond County to hose for ten beds for prisoners.
Commissioner Small, I recommend that I do, uh, the board and I asked the county to look at this more, it's on their side, so.
Or number, but. It's a significant cost.
Yes.
Three, seven, four, eight, cent today.
Better maintaining a tax facility, yeah, right. Okay, any further discussion? I think we should roll call this, probably.
Yes. Thompson.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
From it, yes, got there.
Yes. Motion carries.
Interesting particles that are put in the box of that. Um, the um. How the new laws regarding who can, like, be sentencing kids.
Yeah, it's pretty chill, it's more like, I think we dealt with, um, places and sanctions. And suspending driver's licenses and.
I have a copy on the desk.
Yeah, we've suspended driver's licenses in the state of Michigan for years for all kinds of things, including child support and tickets and anything else. And a lot of those things are possible for windows and other people back there on there. Several years ago, when they suspended driver's license and now they're not going to. That one, the marijuana laws. And basically legalizing marijuana.
Court systems are definitely shying away from retaining people, so. I mean, I, you know, ten years ago, we used to make money at Haverhill.
Well, it it, you know, a big part of it was, uh, you paid to stay, if you didn't have your fines and costs paid, you went over, but again, it's going to be over. And, um, and not the judge, probably has a different stance on it, but the law doesn't permit the judges to do that.
Okay.
That's not, this this is only federal, I see you still have that.
No, no, there's medical in here, um. Yeah, I don't have a need for this anymore, uh, but, uh, they are covered, they have the same medical insurance carriers we did here. So that that company covers everything that's not, that happens at the jail. If they do end up having to go to the hospital or anything like that, that's extending, we would have to cover that, just like we do now. Um, fortunately, Oscar County is giving us four hours of of uh. Coverage and security at the jail, or we have to relieve them, so the first four hours and. Um, most things are cleared up in four hours, they either know if you're staying or if you're getting released to the home within four hours, so we can make arrangements to get out somebody now there to guard prisoners, but um. The contract I saw between Alpena and Mount Wrensy, like, two hours, that's that's pretty hard for us to call somebody home, get dressed and get into the hospital. Four hours is way more doable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I found the sheriff, yeah, the sheriff found there's been real, real quack group on the on this agreement and, uh. When we had, when we had people leaving to go to work elsewhere a couple of weeks ago, and I had one staff to staff in jail, I called up and said, we're ready for them, so. Took four of our inmates down there. Yeah. Yep, he is. Little popper.
Really, Scott? All right, thanks again.
Okay.
You did a great job.
Back for.
Yes.
Full session.
Yeah. Thanks. Next item is child care fund budget summary. What is the table qualified to speak about that?
I looked at it, it's a little tiny, tiny bit lower than my, you're right. It's older than two years ago. And Jennifer was going to present it to you, but she had a conference to attend. And the state actually sets the budget, but this is just the anticipated expenditure, basically, and it does need your signature, so she just. Presented it for.
Same as we do every year, but they're just, they're giving us less money.
I would suggest that before you sign this, you change the name of the court contact person. Yes. And her email address. And it's. Now updated one, as a delegate. That ran both.
Yeah. Okay.
Deputy Scott.
Catch. Good catch.
Have you do that?
Good question.
I mean, I can write on there, but. Yeah.
Judge?
The judge has already signed it, I'm not going to change anything on it, she'll have to just redo it, I'm just going to submit it for signature. But if you make a motion to authorize her, her your signature, she can fix everything, and you can type and throw it in your box for the thing.
So do we motion authorize once the changes are made?
Or email and last name.
Motion to that? I'll do it, I'll make a motion to authorize. So here I'm doing it. Authorize the chair to sign, uh, the county child care budget summary wants the. Contact information is correct. Who decided? Any further discussion? Yes, stop, you're going to let the judge know that she needs to change this?
I'll let Jennifer know that she needs to change it and then submit it back to the judge for a signature.
Any further discussion? You done, uh, all of them favor? Well, the real.
From it, yeah, got there.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Small.
Yes. All right, uh, next, uh, I'm going to, for discussion purposes. Rock next or? Yeah, Dave, what's in the rough, right? Oh. Uh, would be approved, um. Just maybe a motion to. For bits, yeah, bid process presented by Dave.
I'm going to motion.
Was highly on a film, does anybody have a? Way we could say that, that we break down?
I can't hear you. What is?
There'd be a motion to allow building the ground to submit, or to request bids to the roof project. So, moving by. Bill, second by Dan.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Of favor?
All right.
Both, motion carries. Next call. I will make a motion for discussion purposes only. To, uh. Approve. Resolution of support of our citizens' First Amendment rights. All right, motion by Adam, second by Bill. After some. So, uh, the reason I did this is because. I had the feeling at the beginning of the year that, you know, every single motion that hits my desk, our desks. Resolution, sorry, um. As provided by somebody who's not necessarily, has to be brought up by by the commissioner. And like I said, I. Just like we're doing here, I don't agree with. But, uh, it's fair discussion, because people want us to talk for it, so. Nobody wants to make comments or counter, just vote, that's up to you. I guess the only thing I can say is, Gary, I I appreciate your passion, it's something you do is. You're definitely passionate and you're definitely on top of the, on top of the. The situation and and on top of our, the passion of our country. Only problem I have, and I I can never vote for a resolution that has multi, multi different. Means behind it. And there's, it's just. There's just too many things in here that, I mean, a resolution. I'm going to pay you for that, a resolution going through multiple, multiple. Different ideas, different, um. Different resolutions, really, this this is not one resolution, this is a resolution caused. Covering multi, multi different facets that I, there's no way I could. Saying it's too vague. No, they've just covered what you meant since. Give me a resolution covers one thing that we have. Ignore. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor? Respond with the yes please.
From it, no, Thompson.
No.
Small.
No.
Got there.
No.
Brady.
No. Okay, moving on. We need to go into a closed session. Discuss some union matters. That's fine, so. Let's have a five minute recess, and we'll re adjourn, re adjourn, re connect there. And, uh. One or two sec.
Can't you have cue cards that says send in treasury? Send in IT.
Yeah.
How are you going to notify the public you're back in open court or open session? Did all those folks leave, leave, or they just kind of congregate?
They just leave.
No, if they wanted to hang out, they would stay in the hallway.
I don't see anybody, but I've not looked around.
It's not our responsibility to go count crying.
Yeah, click start video. See? Hold up the IT card.
I'd love to go. I'd love to.
Oh, there it is.
Sweet.
Okay.
You're lying.
I did comment. If you have any questions.
We're back. Sorry.
I'm sure Scott will be able to talk. Poor Bill.
We'll have that two before.
David's been great. Back in open session. So. There's no help for me. First of all, you proceed as a roll call, please.
From it here, small.
Yes.
Thompson.
Here.
Brady.
Here.
Yes. We need to approve the P O L C.
Oh, that one.
settlement. You have to five.
Motion by Karen. Where have I built? Catch all that, Lane, Stephanie?
Yes.
Do you feel your discussion? Roll call, please.
Brady.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
From it. Yes. Got there.
Yes.
Too much information.
Yes.
All right. But make a motion that we authorize a chair to sign. Emergency action guidelines for Alcoa County. It's the same as last year. Just emergency managers' action guidelines, right?
Emergency action guidelines for the county. Yes.
Okay, watch my dance secretary. That was favorite.
No. No, just got to skip to explain what.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve emergency management performance grant work assignment coordinating report.
Actually, it's the yearly work agreement.
Yearly, yearly report?
No. Work agreement. For the year, for 2022.
2022. So it's the emergency management performance grant for the year 2022 yearly.
And how much is that grant?
It's not a grant. It's the work agreement between the state of Michigan and Alcoa County.
I'll give it mentioned grant.
Said on there.
Just the agreement does that.
All support if you don't have support.
Well, just supported. Bill and Carol. Any discussion? None. Then you roll call.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Got there.
Yeah.
From it. Yes.
Okay, moving on. Go ahead and have to go. Okay, finance, one thing I have is. You have everything done on our sewer project. We had approved up to $15,000 from sewer project. It came in at $14,585. And we have all the invoices, check numbers, everything. Give the show.
Good thing you didn't make 14, five.
Yeah. So everything should be there, sure. Okay. With that, so move the room, so. Or on the. Both 2022 budget. Cheryl might have more to say on that, but we're still meeting and moving forward.
I would like to ask if you're on any. Committees that require us to have their. 2020, 2022 budget information in for us to have. If you could encourage them to. Keep that information to us. That would be awesome.
I can't do it both ways again. She knows not to stop. I can't.
Okay. I don't have any options. Where are you moving my honor today?
Nope. Right, right above your technique.
Are you on the square?
Yes.
That's it for finance. Is personal or anything besides what we've already discussed?
No.
Are you sure?
Oh, that's. We've had some person. For 214 to. Start that process. What we've done is involve the other ones, but. Ask them to come and talk of this because then they were in the contract that's troublesome for them. And we have those notes. Not everyone was able to come, but we also sent it to them that if they were able to. If they did anything, please let us know. And hopefully that will be done.
Okay, next up is treasurer's report.
I just want to go back to. One little piece of finance today, the convention facility taxes that we get in for the convention facility funds. And we have more than was budgeted. We should be fine with. We should have one more payment. We've been getting approximately 17,000. We've got two of the quarterly payments at 17 a piece. But we under budgeted. We only budgeted 38,000. I'm suggesting that we increase that to 17,000. But because it is an appropriation to outside services, that was under budgeted as well as well. So we're going to need an additional 8,500. To be placed into. That line item that you pay out of, and we do not have. We don't have that. There's nothing within that outside services that can be reduced because they're all contract. So I'm giving this information to the board to figure out where they'd like that money to come from and how they'd like to handle it. Because it's an outside appropriation. We get convention facility funds dollars come in quarterly from the state of Michigan and their collective revenues, and we're obligated to pay half of that to. Memory. For substance abuse. It's just under budgeted. So I would ask that you let me know where you'd like those monies to come from, or if you want to make an amendment to the bottom line budget, I can get together as well. I just need to know where it's like that. Those changes.
Members of that.
That's fine. We only, the only small issue I have would be we only need to budget 8,000. Or we need to budget 17,000 in revenues. I can reduce the fund balance by, so we can do 85 and 85 in the top and the bottom if you'd like, an increase in both. The bottom line. I'll put that together if that's.
Okay.
It's a board decision. How are you placing in the list?
Put it together and then.
Sure.
You needed to have it done before the next meeting or?
Yeah. I'm just making you aware of that. But I mean, some guidance with your. As far as that, we are. Working on 2022, but it's being up 2021. I forgot our people. We're putting out dog licenses. We're sending reminders out for dog licenses. We had a great response from our mailings last year. We decided to try and ease up on the cost of mailing, so we have four postcards. Which were much more cost effective than printing by ink and printing. Should be dealing those out. We have received our dog licenses. Putting those out for sale. In November or 2022.
Okay, that's a question I was going to ask. Personal level.
We have. One issue with one of the properties that I'm working with Tom on that we had sold at the auction, which we will be. Pulling. That to becoming for lack of notice. I'm working with title checker, title check company, the one that we contract with and Tom to get that issue resolved. Other than that, we are looking at. Running, we are running in the black.
That's. What do you mean? I've never heard those words before.
It's only October. At the end of September, we were. We had a fund balance of 181. Before April.
$181?
$181.
Oh.
Um. Pretty exciting.
That is. I've never heard that in six years since I've said it.
I do have. The breakout of per. Monthly balances for each individual item if you are interested in the breakout rate here. And then I also have the cash balances for the yearly totals, the debt, the sum credits. If anyone has any questions in regards to that, I'm happy to answer with you. Other than that.
Thank you very much. Click your port.
Um, yeah, just looking with the budget, the 2022 budget. And I've got mine completed. I just have to input them and send them off into the spreadsheet on my, can read my handwriting. There were definitely a lot of communications that came in, some last minute. There's a Mitchell township letter. He said that he was bringing us for next time on the next meeting. 44 North, Jennifer Martin. I don't know if she's going to be here in person or via Zoom. I get asked her if she's going to do it via Zoom to present quotes for. She's going to punch some numbers with a different agency as well, her carrier. And then she'll present those on the 20th meeting. You have an invite. From NAMCA for an October 14. Oh, and ARPA.
Yep.
Okay, and then. I just receiving some of these like, like October 1st. I don't know if they go to you. That Michigan Department of Treasury is on the CIP. We sent out. That's also, I sent you the emails as well as printouts so that you sign up for any of these. Don't go to the PDF, go to the little envelope and click on there and access their sites if we're going to attend any of these. Or sign up or register. There's a survey from Lara, it looks like, and the Bureau of Construction Codes. I don't know if anyone's participated in that survey before, but there's, I think I provided the email for that as well for you to access the link. And then there were some resolutions that I included at the very end as well. I'll have to report. This might want to look further into your communications.
No. Very much. Three reports, sorry, Terry.
Question. Are we going to respond to your [inaudible 00:09:11]. Directly or are we going to ask representatives of the commission?
Well, we stated that. Yeah. Bring it forward next week.
Next week. I probably will have a motion.
And I also. In communication to ACCO A requesting an updated appropriate comment. I would ask, not only I am judging, but I need Chan that has responded with appropriate documentation for both I can and I from 11. Prior contractors.
For not knowing this, but who was our. Okay. Now I was trying to make reports, Terry. I'm starting. Me, Dan. Actually, you can change all their, they're putting out their new releases. Trying to keep the public.
And then there were some resolutions that I included at the very end as well. I have to report. This might want to look further into your communications.
No. Very much. Oh, that's me, for Terry.
Question.
Oh, sorry.
Are we going to respond to you? Directly or are we going to pass to representatives of the commission?
We stated that. Yeah, Terry's going to bring it forward next week.
Next weeks. I probably will have a motion.
And I also. In communication to ACCO A requesting an updated appropriate comment. I would ask, not only I am driving, but I am Chan, that they've responded with appropriate documentation for both Ivan Chan and Ivan Levin on these fire contractors.
Okay. Now I was trying to make any reports, Terry. Just started. Me, Dan. Actually, you can see all their, they're putting out their new releases. Trying to keep the public advice. There's a lot of, let's face it, there's a lot of controversy out there right now. We saw a little bit of today. Between vaccination for mass mandates, the school systems. Just I'm getting department help and bad practice. Misstatement's completely is that we're taking a stand education and you went through. What'd you say? Me and I'm saying nobody knows what the heck you're doing. That's my mind. That's very possible. They're stepping general dangers around it. That's all. Okay, come here. Um, from the district out by four, everybody did Dr. Min's letter, which is very good, this report. Pretty update on that. Attendant NAMCA gave you guys the report from that under desk. Michigan Works still tons of money. Nobody coming. Even with the, with the federal money run out or employment, they haven't seen any kind of increase apart from people coming looking for jobs, but you know, hopefully that, that's going to turn around. NAMCA was in NAMCA last Friday. I got that report by truck. I'll print out, give to you guys on them, what they're doing. Another one, tons of money, tons of, they do have a lot of people, but they're out helping. It's kind of a different, you know. Once, once, once given all kinds of money out to people that don't have it, the other one's trying to give money out to people, find it worth. But it was all those. Other than that, Tom should be in tomorrow night. Or, yeah. I don't know, that's it.
Where'd you go?
Union. Union meetings every other day, that thing. That's the normal at this point. Cheryl?
There is one personal thing that we forgot to know. Truly came to us requesting. A part time person in his office that he's bored wants to do that. And he said, please give us something in writing until you will have someone to work on. We have not gotten that yet, no.
They're going to give us kind of report how many people. Is going to give a report, how many people have come in?
No, why?
Will they be?
We asked for, for.
Justification.
Justification, how, how much they want the individual hours and that type of thing. That's all we asked for.
Maybe even who had been included in that. But the activity going on in his office, which would somehow justify.
Where, where, where are you going to send another person in that office when he's there, or is there going to be something?
We're not taking you over the hallway.
We'll deal with that when we get the initial. Yeah. Anyway, in addition to that, I did leave on your desk chair or some part of your area. The memory such drug utilization. A part of the report we had from our board meeting. Nine one one authority board. The coolest thing there probably is that they are going to pick up the cost for the fifteen hundred dollar cost. For the individual township fire departments for the. Eight hundred radios that they're getting, so. So I think that's really, really neat. Also, emergency management. Has approved, this is the. Thirteen fourteen county group that Scott goes to every month. Has approved for us as a twenty nineteen project. Gas monitors, twenty five personal monitors, thirteen monitors, those are for the departments with four. That identify four gases and then also a calibrator device, which. One of the ideas was that the fire chiefs could bring those to the firefighter meeting and then calibrate them during the meeting that are done. What this does, and one of the things that, reasons that we approved it at the. Of emergency level or endorsed, as you will. Many times they'll go, EMS will go or, or the. Sheriff Department. Somebody calls and says, oh, my alarm's going off. Well. They go out with this. Monitor, they can go in with it and find out, is there really carbon monoxide? And most of the time, what they find is that the battery needs changing. But at least this would be a quick, easy way to address them. Well, the canaries died last week. They got cold. Also, reviewed invoices to one one. As he said, we took a lot of personnel. We had senior staff meeting and. Last year, you authorized me to go ahead and sign, and as long as nobody has a problem. I will go ahead and sign the snowplow agreement. The increasing cost was in the bags of salt, two dollars a bag. And John's very good and relatively frugal in the use of it, so I will go ahead and sign that. As I said, there's no increase in the. Individual cost of the plow. Is that for Harbertown or near?
Except for Harbertown too. For Harbertown.
Yeah.
And this will be too.
Just Harvard Dollar or just?
We just Harvard down.
Oh, just Harvard down. Because David may enjoy that.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I was wondering what. It was just. Do we have any? New information on the forestry building construction? Why isn't it? I did receive a phone call from. Monday that he's. How do you want to put it? Really don't want to see this go away, but. Is there any way we can work with that? It's a, it's the same thing, you know, that's what we, we kind of want to go that way, but then they want to take all these different paragraphs out of it. He said, just give them, so I, I got a call, let's see.
Yeah, we can make it work, just lower your price.
I mean. Is if we don't get it, where the heck are we going to put all these? Well, well, I mean, we basically told them that we, we, you're not, we can't. I mean, if we're going to be, you know, if you're going to go up and get a price, then you expect us to buy it for that.
I don't.
If you want, you know, we could sign anything we want on the building, but yeah, we have good faith and want to buy it. But we got to be able to negotiate to the same effect.
I would like to have us ask Harry Harvey to give us a rundown with a ballpark estimate. On all the repairs that need to be done to that bill to make it work. And then walk into negotiation with that.
What this point, and they don't want to sign anything that has negotiations in there. They want to sign.
Right.
This big trade agreement that we're going to buy for this, this appraised money, this.
And no responsibility on any kind of.
You know, it just can't do it.
Not at that price.
No, no, I mean, he even said, should we get, have attorneys get back involved in a couple of things? Tom's the one that worked with the, the US attorney on this to be in with. I haven't asked Tom that, he's been busy. You know, he's gone, but I mean, if Tom's willing to work with that and try to, Tom knows what you want to negotiate, but. At this point in time, why sign anything that we're not going to agree?
Their attorney's free.
Yeah.
Ours isn't. Tom.
Well, I, I think it's, it's, if somebody sent back a fancy, looking at the book and just saying this is the way we're going to do it.
Well, I think we've weighed in the commissioner's additional comments and concerns. Does anybody else have anything? For that? Okay, then we have the one, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, public comments. Five minutes, I think I have somebody who wants to do that. That's an ass, so anybody for public comment? There's nobody in the room, but.
Hey, guys, this is Jessica Dobbs. From Glenny Curtis Township. Can you hear me? Hello?
Hear us? Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, okay, thank you. Sorry, let me turn this down. I just wanted to thank you guys for your time today for Gary's resolution. I know you didn't pass it. That's fine. We don't advocate that you vote any which way. But I, I know you had mentioned. Add on a little bit something about. You don't feel you should bring up every. Resolution that comes across the table, if you will, across your desk, your email. I.
I'm sorry, your microphone's acting really bad.
Ignoring them or their concern, but it is highly important that you bring the resolutions to the table for a vote regardless of how you vote. So I do thank you for bringing his resolution, Gary's resolution, to the table for a vote. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time in that.
Okay, well, thank you, Jessica. Everybody else? Hearing none, we will adjourn, adjourn the meeting until October twentieth at one thirty three AM.